Okay, let's call the meeting for order. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
That's very good. Pursuing the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders to submit certain provisions of the open meeting law, BL Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's February 12th, 2022 revised order, this meeting at Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote. In-person attendance will be limited to BHRSD school committee members, superintendent, and all district school administrators at the district offices. No in-person attendance members of the public will be permitted at this time, however, the meeting may be accessed remotely through Zoom. Agenda items of those reasonably anticipated by the chair and not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Those items not listed may be drawn up or discussed to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, the school committee reporter, and other members of the public, and will be transcribed and approved. Videos will be made public and posted to our website. So I'll start with a roll call. Anne Hutchinson?
Here.
Jason St. Peter?
Here.
Sean is not here. Bonnie Bon Befoni?
She was just in a meeting with us.
Molly Thomas?
Here.
Bill Fields?
Here.
Diane Singer?
Here.
Cory Smith?
On a nerd device in this room. Somebody's acting.
It was me.
It was Jason.
Cory is here. Rich DeHoney?
Present.
And I'm present. We have first order is the minutes from January 27th, 2022, February 10th, 2022, and February 17th, 2022. Do you have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Bill, a second by Rich. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And although yes on two of them, I abstained from the 17th, I wasn't present. Moving ahead to superintendent's report.
Okay, so I think we'll start with the good news items, and we could start with Katie Retschel and Muddy Brook.
Okay, so last week we had the Press America Day for a week. There were a couple of things that went on. On the actual day, we had a virtual meeting with Mary Cop Osborne. She had the kid, she gave the kids several titles for her next books and told them a little bit about the ideas and they voted. So Time of the Turtle King is our choice, so we'll see if that comes to fruition next time. So we had removal of masks, of course, this week. We did have a virtual coffee with some families. There was very few, but they were probably the most anxious about it, and we talked through some stuff before the week, but it went very smoothly. Tomorrow, we're holding an assembly to reemphasize the values of kindness, responsibility, and working hard. They were developed while we go, and they're linked to High Five tickets where kiddos will receive for doing the right things. We're starting with kindness and working towards grade level goals and school goals together, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Ben?
Sure. Lots of great news to share with you. Over our February break was the 154th birthday of WB DuBois. There was a lot that went on in South County, Big County, really around the world, and some really fun things at the middle school. Several years ago, for the 150th, I had the pleasure of meeting Jeffrey Peck Jr., who's DuBois's great grandson, and we were able to do a project that year with a school in Philadelphia, and he was able to come interact with kids and talk with them. This year, he actually came and joined us the Friday morning before break. It was amazing. He got to see a good, over half of our students pass through the library. But what was even more amazing is that he brought his son, Jeffrey Peck Jr., so it's DuBois's great grandson and his great great grandson, who got to listen to our students. They shared a lot of amazing things. Eighty graders shared some reinterpretations into middle school language of King's Letter from Birmingham Jail. Other eighth graders shared their advocacy projects. So that started a really good discussion around what it was like for DuBois and his kind, and what it's like for students in our time. And then lots of other interesting research and just creative poetry that students made. It was really an amazing experience of presentations and then dialogue with Jeff and Jeff Jr. It was really a honor to have them. They really, really enjoyed being part of this. I think they'll come back. One of the big things was Jeffrey brought his son because they buried Jeff's mom and Jeff's grandmother, Yolanda, in the cemetery, where DuBois's first wife, his infant son, and his dog's burial is his favorite. It's been for them, and they talked a lot about DuBois and about Yolanda. It was really an amazing experience. Another really wonderful thing is we have a DuBois welcoming crew. It's a group of parents who try to create activities and make families feel welcome, who aren't traditionally feel welcome in our community. And they did a student activity called the Wish Tree. So every student basically wrote out a piece of composable fabric, a wish that they have for themselves and the world, and then we chose four trees right along the line of the county road, where each team put up the wishes, and so they're kind of fluttering now for the next week, which is really cool. It was a timely activity. Next year, I think we'll try to do it in the fall and have them last a little bit longer when it's warmer, but it's just an important one to have to kind of boost kids up in the middle of winter. Some amazing wishes that are really heartfelt or funny, which could be really interesting to hear these couple of weeks. And another amazing thing is the Stockbridge Munson Band of Mohicans who live out in Wisconsin had a really big engagement with a lot of towns here in South County, and these are the people who lived here before colonial times and then were moved out there. So there's just a lot of interest in student engagement and education, I understand, and the Sheffield Historical Society along with the Stockbridge Munson Band put together a really amazing exhibit, which is now in the library. It was down in Berkshire School. It was led by one of the teachers, our teacher at Southern Brookshire, Stephanie Grant, which was a great idea. And it's really cool. The kids are coming through and just understanding a lot about people who lived here before the flood of times and doing some research and just learning a lot, and then the exhibit goes off. Our schools in the county, it's still one of those places, and we're hoping to bring the exhibit back maybe even in the years to come, so that kids can just continue to get deeper to understand their history.
Yeah, great. So let's start with Zoe and Julian, and then Christie, you could go after them as needed.
Yeah, of course. I think the biggest thing would be our shift to being mask optional, and just like from a student perspective, I think that's been a huge success and rolled out really thoughtfully. It's so nice and like kind of surreal to be seeing everyone's faces again, and I know that teachers are all commenting on that, and the people who are choosing to continue wearing masks, I think people have been really supportive of that. And it just, it does, I don't know if it's like spring or the masks, or it just does feel like we're moving into a new phase of things. Rehearsals for the Spring Musical are underway. It's going to be Addams Family in May. That's very, very exciting. I'll be there every night. Everyone should come. And signups for Spring Sports are happening, so just lots of new beginnings, lots of energy.
Great. Jordan, do you have something to add?
No, no. Keep it nice and brief.
Okay, great. Christie, do you have anything to add?
I do have a few more things, and Zoe did hit a few of mine, so I love it when they go first. We did have the eighth grade open house this week, Tuesday evening. We think it was approximately 80 families that joined us. We had them in three spaces this time, and the presenters moved around the building, so it was harder to get a sense of how many folks joined, but it was a really good turnout. We were happy. We've got some great feedback. Our, the whole guidance team, Marsha Scowran, Sean Flynn, Mike Powell did a great job, and Carl also did a presentation. We had 12 students join to support the presentations and share more information with the students and families that came. So that was a wonderful evening. We're happy to host the folks that joined us for that. Our student center reopened and the school store reopened, which just gave excitement in the building and starting things feeling a little more normal. We just had some really cool school-wide events going on right now in the library. We're doing our annual chess tournament, so the brackets are all up in the library, and we have that competition going on. In PE classes, they've been doing floor hockey, the floor hockey unit, and so Michelle Campbell and Ryan Kelly actually selected top teams from each period, and in advisory, they're facing off. And next Thursday, there will be the champions of the floor hockey competing, and crews will be able to come to the gym to see who wins that. The ninth grade team of teachers has been planning for the ninth graders on March 24th, what they are calling Ninth Grade March Madness, which will start with a ninth grade breakfast, and then they're going to just essentially have a really nice day for the ninth graders to do activities together and have a lot of options. And then I'll just finish with some things that have been happening in our music department. The music department has been bringing in some outside folks. Our members in music are down right now, and a lot of that is due to the pandemic, but they're trying to support the students. And Jeff Stevens actually joined the band this week, which was so wonderful to have him in the building, those of you who know him. And next Thursday, orchestra and chorus are doing the cabaret in the cafeteria, so yeah.
Great, thanks, thanks much. So the big news, which we'll talk a little bit, but to not share it in good news is problematic, is the MSBA notification, and we'll come back to that in a sec, but I just wanted to mention it there. The next thing on the agenda is every year annually, you vote, and as long as I've been here, and probably forever, you vote to accept or participate in school choice, and then historically, you leave it to me and the principals to figure out where their space is and which classes. We, we had the applications. We actually did the lottery and were ready to go and get notifications out, except in all but the youngest grades, because the youngest grades is tied to the town census and some other activities. But, but from, I think, grades one and up, we'll be able to send out those notifications if you do me the favor of somebody making a motion to have Berkshire Hills Regional School District participate in school choice for the 2022-2023 school year.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Rich, a second by Bill. Any discussion?
What are our numbers looking like when I share?
I'll come back to it with a more formal report, but we, we have room in, in almost every grade to accept students. We've got a lot of interest, particularly in the high school. We're graduating a very, or hopefully we're graduating a very, assuming they'll make it, Rich. A very large group of.
And I want to. I want.
I think, Christie, you can correct me on this, but the senior class is 135?
No, I think it's 147.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So the senior class is, is very large, so we have some additional capacity, and typically what we do is we accept people in this first round, and then people reach out to us all through the remainder of the spring, and if we have room within reason, we'll, we'll accept them on a rolling basis. It's a little easier to accept more students in the high school because of the way the schedule works. If we accept too many students, and I'll share a separate like class size spreadsheet a little bit later in the meeting, but if we accept too many students in elementary or the middle school, it actually could force us to bring on another teacher. So we try to accept up to the limit. We've been a little more cautious during COVID than we have in, in previous years, but as we're moving to it from a pandemic to an endemic, I feel more comfortable about that.
Any other questions? Roll call vote. Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Sorry, I didn't see her name too.
I hear you.
I heard you say yes.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bonnie, could you say yes again?
I guess the promoter's here because she's in the attendees. Okay, so.
I don't think it's going to be a decisive vote, Steve.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to.
It's, it's not, it's not letting me promote her. So I'm sorry, if somebody from CTSB can promote Bonnie Bon Befoni out of the attendees, that'd be great. It's not letting.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And yes, it's unanimous.
Okay, Bonnie's promoted. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, just while, while we're asking you, I don't think my rights to promote people are active. If, if you could do that, that'd be great too. So thank you for that, and I'll report more on that. So the really big news, like, and when the MSBA shared this news with me, I said it was like the big news of my decade, is that the MSBA invited us into the eligibility period for the project at Monument Mountain, right? So they invited 17 schools to move forward, and they rejected 41 or 42. This is on the level of a minor miracle. It, it's a huge deal, and I'll probably say it 100 times, 1,000 times, between now and we ever get to the town votes, we can't squander this opportunity, right? If, if for some reason we're unable to move forward as a community on this, I don't think we'll ever get this level of support again from the MSBA. So a huge, huge deal. We're going to work extraordinarily hard to continue to understand the needs of the community and to move forward on this. What's markedly different from the, the last time we did this is our educational plan and our thinking about education is much richer and deeper. As you recall, we redid our regional agreement in the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, and one of the things that shifted in that was how future assessments for capital projects are done. The, the number and range of voters have changed dramatically in the three towns since the last time we visited this. Great Barrington has, has almost 1,000 more residents than it did the last time, and, and the population shifted some. All of the communities, notwithstanding today's inflation numbers, are, are much stronger economically, and the assessed values have gone up. So, oh, and then the other thing, which is super important, is we're about to retire our existing debt on what we had previously called our new buildings, Muddy Brook and DuBois, and as we retire that debt, that potentially makes some space. So I think, and Terry Calgill wrote this in The Edge, but I think the stars are increasingly more aligned for this, and, and those of you who've read the letter, that there's sort of, there, there are two parts to it. We, we have an eligibility period that starts, and that commences August 1st, and then we have 270 days to do a whole number of things. Compliance, form a building committee, do some deep work around Chapter 74 and vocational education, do some work around education, get an enrollment projection locked in, get, get that projection certified. Steve will have a ton of work to do around maintenance and capital planning. And, and part of this is doing the local vote, and then an agreement to do a feasibility study. The feasibility study is what we did before, when we bring in architects and designers and do a really deep look at what we need and what that looks like. And, and that'll be, that agreement will be signed within 270 days of, of August 1st. The, the other thing we have to do, and this is going to set up Rich in a minute for a motion, is because the MSBA paid for our first feasibility study, they're not paying for this one, and this one we're paying for. So in, in a minute, Rich will read a motion to authorize borrowing, which we can do as soon as today, and then bring it to the three towns and their select boards and finance committees to have it put on their warrant, so it gets voted on at this spring's town meetings, which are in May and June. So the recommendation is we, we set aside the, we get permission to borrow to eventually set aside the funds to do the feasibility study, and the urgency there is, one, we have some momentum, but two, in sort of our, our obligation to be fiscally responsible, we want to get it on the upcoming town meeting, so we don't have to do a special town meeting, and we want to move it forward because the 270, 270 days, starting in August, falls before the next year's town meeting. Any questions on that? I said a lot very quickly.
I was just going to ask, we have gone through this before in 213, and we had two votes. Does that help us in regards to preparation and doing some of this basic work that I saw on the third page?
Yeah, so, so some of it can carry over, and, and some of the existing conditions are the same or slightly worse. Some are better, right? Steve and his crew did some work, and, and it's better than, than where we were at. The MSBA process evolves and changes some, and we're just learning sort of all those nuances, and we may not even actually understand all of them till we get through each detailed piece, right? But, but I, I think our, our previous work will help, but there, there are no, there are no shortcuts, and, and we'll go through each of these pieces in a very deliberate way. I, I think the other thing that, that we'll talk at a, a future meeting, we have a little time on this, is the composition of the building committee and what that looks like. That's very important, and when we did this the first time, there was one structure, and that structure's been slightly revised the, the second time, a couple people in, in different roles and, and other things. But it, it'll be familiar to us, but, but we should also be really deliberate and, and pay attention to the, the shifts. When, when we did the, the call with the MSBA, two sort of neat things happened. One, they, they individually recognized us, right? And I'm a little nervous about getting recognized for anything, because it, it only matters if we, if we get it all the way through. But the executive director recognized us specifically for our, our work on the regional agreement, and, and that that was a, a big deal, right? So this isn't a, we've been working on this for, for more than a decade, right? But again, like, the, the ultimate recognition I want around this work is the, is the final vote, right? And it's just a, an incremental step. I, I think that's really mostly it. Obviously, like, our legislative delegation was helpful on this. Jason, in particular, on Buildings and Grounds, Steve, Rich and Steve all played a role, and everybody in the committee played a role. Christie, too, in articulating the educational plan, and, and anything we ever wrote that was interesting about the high school, I sent to them almost to the point of stalking them. And, and it's a fine line between being persistent and stalking, and, and I think it worked, so.
I should tell you that as chairperson, a co-chairperson in the next steps committee, I emailed you that day, and I asked for permission to send it out. Every one of them, except Josh, who I don't know where Josh is now, every one of them wants to roll up their sleeves and be part of this. So you have a good foundation in regards to people who, not being on our committee, work really hard for a good year, I think, to go to the towns and go to the finance committee meetings and the select boards. So I just want you to know that they are ready.
No, I, I think that's great, and I think we'll have a whole, like, series of meetings and strategic planning about what we do and how we invest people. The one thing that I'm going to commit to doing is, and I figured this out, but there are not that many people that live in Stockbridge, and if I call a handful of people every night for a year, I can call them all. And I'm, I'm committing to, to doing that, right? But, but that's like tip of the iceberg. We'll, we'll figure out all sorts of ways we could do it. So Rich, with that, I pass it over to you and, and hope you can read the motion and that we have support to move forward on this.
I'm just going to go off the top of my head. I move that the Berkshire Hills Regional School District, here and after the district, appropriates the amount of $1,500,000 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility and schematic design study for the Monument Mountain Regional High School located at 600 Stockbridge Road, Great Barrington, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, here and after referred to as the study. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the school building committee. To me, this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16D, and the district agreement as amended, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The district acknowledges that the Massachusetts School Building Authority, here and after MSBA grant program, is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. In any cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approval by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district, provided further that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Further, that within seven days from the date of which this vote is adopted, the secretary be and hereby is instructed to notify the Board of Selectment of each of the member towns of this district as to the amount and general purpose of the debt herein authorized as required by the district, district agreement and Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws.
Do you have a second? Second discussion. Roll call vote.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you just briefly explain how we get to that amount?
Yeah, so the, the first time we did the feasibility study, it was right around a million dollars, and so we just did it inflation adjusted. It, it's not a perfect number, and obviously we have to go out to, like, do a whole process to go out to bid, but, but we thought it's, it's an approximate, but like, good number, and if, if the work came in, one of the obligations is when you go out to bid or you negotiate a contract, you, you need to have the money reserved, whether you're going to spend it all or not. So if we were to do a process and, and select a group to do the work, and it came in less, then unused funds would, would drop down to E and D, which almost certainly.
They would use it to pay, to pay on the loan.
Right, to, to pay on the loan. Yeah, so that, that's how we got to one and a half. We, we, there's a, there's, we think it's the right. There's a, we think it's the right amount and maybe there's a little cushion in there. And if anybody's done any work lately, the costs continue to escalate. Any other questions?
I might as well have a comment that a lot of us who have been in this process for a long time lost heart at various points and got discouraged and got negative and maybe banged their heads on these tables. And the administration never lost faith and kept driving and got us to this point. You know, some of us were looking to go on other paths and it's really admirable that Peter and Sharon and Steve and all the principals hung in there and got us to this point. I honestly didn't think we'd be here, so this is just, it's amazing.
I agree totally. And I'm just really happy that we don't have to do it on our own. Anyone else? Roll call, Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Hi.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Molly?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Unanimous. Very exciting times. Yeah, thank you. A lot of work ahead of us, but very exciting times. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for that. So a couple, a couple of quick things. There have been some concerns both about staffing and unfilled positions. And we've been doing some things behind the scenes to try to make that better. And that resulted in two agreements or like MOUs. One with the cooperative group particularly around food service employees and raising their compensation a little bit because the market continues to be tighter and tighter and we're under staff, so that's the first part of it. And then the second one was specifically with the Unit C, the paraprofessional group. When teachers come into the district, they're placed on a salary schedule tied to their years of experience. And historically, when pairs came in, even if they'd been a pair in the other, in another district, they were placed on step one. We reached an agreement where new pairs to this district can be placed up to step five with an additional sort of clause, but not to be paid more than existing employees in the district with the same years of experience, right? But the difference between step one and step five is quite significant and could make the difference between somebody coming to work for us or going to another district. So it's an incremental step in better compensating some of our most important employees. And I'm glad we were able to figure that out. So that's one piece. The other thing that people sometimes wonder about and the communications position discussion provoked some of this. And we're gonna have a whole conversation about that at our meeting on the 31st. But is what's going on with other unfilled positions? So across the buildings, there's some unfilled para positions and we're working hard to try to fill those. There's an unfilled special education position at the high school and we're working hard to fill that. When we get to the personnel report, you'll see an additional grant funded .8 psychologist position that we're adding, which is in response to mental health needs of students. And then a big thing came up that's sort of a misunderstanding and I'm gonna show some or spreadsheet on this, but this is connected to the elementary school. So the head count at the elementary school is largely the same as it has, but it's gone up a little bit. But there's a perception that we lost positions at the elementary school. And in the context of COVID, before Katie got here, Tim, with my support, actually the whole committee's support, made a quite intentional decision to reduce class size in a number of grades. And you'll see it in a sec, but I sort of want to set it up. And to have more smaller sections rather than fewer larger sections. And the intent was twofold. One was to support remediation and acceleration of kids who missed some time in the first year of COVID. And then also to let us keep the elementary school open longer in the second part of the first year of COVID and in this year. So the thing that keeps coming up is a couple of people retired and what happened to those two intervention positions? And something else happened and what happened to the librarian position? What happened to all those positions were we took the number of kids that were in fewer classes and divided them up into smaller groups and put them in more sections. And this is the little spreadsheet I'll show you and it'll be clear as day. And as we shift from the pandemic to it being endemic, we'll make some parallel shifts and fill positions that were previously specialist positions with ideally folks who are in the district already. So let me share this one thing to sort of highlight that. Okay. Good, so I'll make it a little bigger. So the kindergarten, and it's a little hard to see both the header and this, but in the kindergarten classes stayed largely the same from 20 to 22. So where my cursor is, you'll see 14, 15, right? That's similar. In first grade, we had sections of 17 and they went down to 15, 14. This is where it starts getting interesting. So in second grade, we had sections of 20, 19 and 19. And there were three total sections in 20. And in 22, there are five sections of 11, 13, 11, 15 and 13. So do you tab that context for what I'm talking about? Is this making sense? Yes. Third grade, 19 and 18, and there were three sections. And then that became 14, 13, 14, 12 and 15, right? So as we go forward, we may go from five sections to four and sort of split the difference. But we're gonna generate space with full-time equivalents to do things that we're not doing now. So when people, and let me stop sharing, when people have concerns about where do those positions go? Those positions are your colleagues and they're just focused on different stuff or they have been for this year and last year. But as we reallocate students and rethink of class sizes, and we're not, like I'm not making class sizes a 34 like when I taught in New York. We're going from nine to 14, which is totally reasonable. We'll be able to create the other positions that provided some of the support people were looking for. And there was sort of an inverse relationship here. So if you're in really small class sizes, you need fewer additional supports. And if you're in slightly larger class sizes, the model of some pullout or push-in support makes more sense, okay? So I'm sharing that to hope to clarify what, a small number of vocal people reached out and had concerns about. Questions on that? Okay. So I got to unfilled positions. Let me talk a little bit about COVID. And I can share, this is like the day of a million screen shares. I have a good chart on that. And just a sec. Okay, this one. So one of the things we were concerned about post-vacation was the potential increase in COVID cases. And then the double whammy of a week after vacation plus going mask optional. And every other vacation we had, we saw a significant post-vacation spike, right? So that's why we kept masks for the week. This is the most current data. So and we're still waiting for some of the pool testing to come in, but zero positive staff cases in the last seven days. And then from a building perspective, two at Muddy Brook, four at Du Bois and one at Monument Mountain. And we're still pool testing a little more than 200 people in each building each week. And the number, I think the only, so at Du Bois, two additional cases became evident outside of pool testing, right? But all this to say, like the COVID-19 is still there, but it appears that it's starting to be very manageable. And as the weather continues to get better, except for the occasional snowstorm, we'll, I think we'll be outside more and windows will be open more. We're gonna continue to monitor this. The countywide data is getting very good. I think the infection rate I checked this afternoon is like down to 2.3. We used to be like crimson, which is the worst end of the world. And now we're down to orange on our way to yellow. And a long time ago, I shared that like 60 cases for 100,000 might be the magic number when we were really in the clear. And I think next week we might be there or maybe the week after. So really good news. I'm psyched about it. And I know some people are still masking. I support them in doing that. But I think we'll get to the point where people will, everybody will be really comfortable soon. And, yeah.
Those numbers getting posted on the website?
Yeah, so that goes up. It may be on it already. So I, the nurses do it on Wednesday or Thursday when they do a state report. And then I send it out to all the staff Thursday afternoon. And then shortly after I send it out to all the staff, it goes on, it goes on the website. So it's probably there now and if it's not there now, it'll be there tomorrow. And if somebody wanted to go back and do a comparison over time, they could. I'm not doing myself a longitudinal graph because I don't think it's the return on investment is worth it, but you could go to the COVID Act Now site and see the trend over time. Any other questions about that? And the, and I think this is since our last meeting, maybe over vacation, the CDC eased their recommendations around wearing masks on school buses. So again, some students and some drivers are choosing to do that. But the broader federal regulations, like you still have to wear masks on airplanes and trains and ferry boats and other mechanisms of travel, but on school buses, you don't have to now, which is, which I think is good. So I think that's the COVID stuff. We now have, and we've deferred these, oh, sorry. Do Steve, Jason and Lisa are raising a hand. Do you want to do it now or do you want to do it at the end of public comment?
We'll take it. We'll take it now. I have no ability here. I'm not a co-host.
Okay, so Jason and Lisa, I'm gonna allow you to talk. Jason or Lisa, can you unmute yourself?
Hi, yeah, hi there. Hi, yeah, we're here. Thanks for letting us, thanks for letting us speak. I'm gonna just talk a little bit and then if it's okay, Jason might say something also. But if you want to do it later, that's fine during public comment. I don't mind waiting.
It's up to you. You have three minutes either way.
Okay, I might as well, I can do it now. I just, do you think that would be, yeah, okay. First of all, I just want to say thank you for your service.
Just your name and address, just for the record, please.
Oh, we live in Cheshire and our children attend your school?
That means a great year.
Okay. It's nice to see, first of all, yeah, it's nice to see your beautiful faces for a change. It's just really great to see. And we are so pleased that you made the right decision, making masks in school optional now. It is a little confusing and maybe you can clarify a little bit after I'm done here, that masking is still required with certain functions, like maybe a ballgame or different things still on school grounds, especially since it's been, you know, it's well established by thousands of accomplished medical experts that masks do not protect you from viruses and they actually lower your immune system, your immune function. So I, you know, we just kind of feel like following guidance that doesn't work is pointless. And we wanted to follow up on our questions that we asked at the school committee meeting of January 27th. And during that meeting, you stated, Peter, that you would email us your answers to two questions that we were still waiting to hear from you. And I know you've been really busy with the budget and everything else going on, so we just, we're trying to be very patient. But, you know, to keep this conversation on COVID relief funding received very clear and separate from the general budget allocation, we would still like an email on this and, you know, perhaps it would be good to send it out as a blast email to everyone just, you know, to enhance the trust and ethics around all of this. It just can't hurt, you know, and it would just help so much with, you know, all of the parents and teachers and community members that really are very curious as to the answers to these two questions. And, you know, the question, question one was how much S R money has the district received from federal government in total regarding the COVID-related items? And number two, are there strings attached requirements to keeping this grant money? For example, some level of wearing masks, continued testing and encouraging injections. You know, I did provide some references from the Federal Register and I'm sure you're well aware of that. But, you know, we all want answers on this and so we would just, you know, we're wondering, you know, if this could be why you continue to keep some level of masking, testing and continued encouragement of injections. You know, is there an obligation behind all of this? You know, is there a contract that you have to sign every six months to state you are complying with the requirements? And we just don't know. We were, and we're just, we're very curious. I mean, can anybody answer this? I mean, you can answer after.
Yeah, you have about 10 seconds, so.
Okay, so I just, I'll finish up and then you can maybe answer. So I get like two seconds back. Regarding the experimental COVID vaccines, we are concerned that you're still strongly encouraging this. You know, first in human gene therapy drug trial for an illness that's less dangerous than the flu for our children. And all this given the fact.
Just wrapping up, you're about 30 seconds over.
Okay, the VAERS data is showing that there's 8,800 adverse events in the age group five to 11-year-olds and 29,000 adverse events in the 12 to 17-year-olds. There's four reported deaths for five to 11-year-olds and 39 deaths for 12 to 17-year-olds. There's four reported deaths for five to 11-year-olds and 39 deaths for 12 to 17-year-olds. And, you know, regarding the COVID testing, the guidelines as of 1/3 required testing in order to participate in extracurricular activities. You know, our children would like to participate, but, you know, we're not sure if you're still using the PCR test. But, you know, it was withdrawn last year by the CDC because it can't distinguish between the COVID flu or common cold. And.
So your time is up, so.
Lisa, a couple of things, I'll respond quickly and sorry, I I thought I sent you an email, but maybe I didn't, or I don't know. I'll go back and check it. The amount of all the ESER funds is public and we've shared it several times in school committee meetings. That's a report that I have and I can just email that to you tomorrow morning. There are a couple of different rounds of it and that's fairly straightforward. The quick answer around masking, well, and the guidance I get and our approach to this continues to evolve over time. The, I think what you're referring to is one of my fairly recent emails, maybe a couple of weeks ago, when I left a placeholder for the possibility of requiring people to wear masks when there were a whole lot of people in the gym at once for a basketball game. So while I'm comfortable with students and staff in small groups not wearing masks, the prospect of putting, and with a very high vaccination rate as an aside, right? But the prospect of putting 500 people in a gymnasium really shoulder to shoulder with each other without masks, not knowing many of their vaccination status concern me. So that's why I left the possibility open for requiring people to wear masks. Both of our basketball teams made it through a game in that tournament and then didn't get to continue on in the tournament, so.
Is that a dick? Is that a dick?
No, no. And then, but. I think, I'm really proud they got as far as they did, right? But I think for all practical purposes, indoor sports are largely done now. And as we get ready for the spring outdoor season, so baseball, softball, track, lacrosse, and our club ultimate frisbee team. But that's a whole different context if it's outside. So I don't think we'll be masking. I might, oh, and crew, I forgot. Call up with crew and tennis and those are all outside. So I had, I got lacrosse, I had fewer.
Ball, big up?
No, no. So I have fewer reservations about that. But I'll reread the minutes from the 7th, look really closely at your two questions, from the 27th, look really closely at your two questions. And I'll get you both the dollar amounts for the ESER funds and any other additional information relevant to your questions.
Okay, let's move ahead to subcommittee reports. CTSB, if you hear me, can you make it? Co-host is going to be much easier. So we have policy, we have second readings of policy ACAB, policy AC-A, policy IMG, policy IMG-A, and policy BEDH. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion?
Can I share a little context? So policy ACAB is the new mask, MASC, recommended policy on sexual harassment and Title IX procedures. Some of these are updated at the state level due to changes in state and federal law and requirements. So we're, or I'm recommending that we adopt this one. ACAB is long and filled with legal language.
Any other discussion? Roll, vote, and?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Paulie?
Aye.
Yes, Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous.
ACA is non-discrimination on the basis of gender identity. And this is also recommended by MASC.
We voted on all of them.
Yeah.
We did it one.
Oh, you did them all. Oh.
I'm very efficient.
Yeah. Can I just share one, sorry, one quick thing, I missed that. The, there are two that are coming up around therapy dogs and that. At our next meeting, I'm going to have somebody come from Berkshire Dogs Unleashed. And you might have read about some of their work with other districts. But they are raising comfort dogs. And this is going to get everybody all excited. It'll be fun. And trying to, and they gave one, I think, to the Pittsfield Police Department. They gave one to the Lenox Public Schools. I think they've given six or seven out to other schools. I'll send something out to staff, but they're looking to give the district a, and he'll come and put it in broader context, but to give the district comfort dog that will be cared for by a primary handler. And when he explains, he'll explain it all, but like all the costs are covered. The primary handler is a staff person. The staff person's responsible for the dog. And then the dog is used in school to support students. So it's an extension of things. It sounds really neat. And I'll, we'll talk about it as a group and then I'll share it with staff. The expected lifespan of a dog is 12 to 14 years. So we'll reach out to see if somebody wants to be their host. Right, but exciting and he'll come to our meeting on the 31st.
Any other questions on policy, comments? Let's go through the subcommittees, buildings and grounds, Jason.
I have none.
Superintendent's evaluation.
We just met and we're working ahead.
Good. Technology is not met, three finance?
We have not met, but I'll touch base with Sharon at some point and try to lay out maybe a meeting or two in the spring.
Do you have anything on the personnel report?
Yeah, and I think she's on the call and she sort of asked me not to do this, but I can't do it and can't not do what she asked me to do. So one of our longtime math teachers, Kathy Ruhberg, who isn't there, she's retiring. And I would just like to recognize her service to the district. I won't go on and on. There'll be another time to celebrate her. But Kathy, you're on the call. Sorry, I couldn't say nothing. Thank you for your service here.
Thanks.
Any old or new business?
I have, I have something under old business and I have something under new business. I ask your indulgence to briefly explain to the school committee and the public why I voted against the newly adopted communication and community engagement position at our previous February 17 meeting. At our previous meeting on February 17, I was totally surprised to have an administrative position brought before us after the public hearing was over that had not been thoroughly studied, presented and discussed by the finance subcommittee or the full school committee. I have been a school board member for eight years and served on the finance subcommittee for all of that time. Never do I remember approval of an administrative or any position with benefits without a job description and discussion first by the finance committee and then the entire school committee before such a position was put into the budget for approval. The new position of Director of CDTE, though as of now not accompanied by a job description, has previously been discussed and presented to both the finance subcommittee and the entire school committee when we appointed Sean Flynn as the first interim director of CDTE three years ago. So to say that we have added an administrative position without a job description before is not accurate. This communications position did not go through that process. Were all the members of the finance committee, as well as other members of the school committee, consulted and engaged in this new proposal? If this was of such educational importance and a district priority, why was it not considered and initiated at the beginning of this past budget cycle? The inclusion of this position at the last minute was, in my opinion, ill-conceived, ill-designed, and ill-timed. Putting in a new administrative position in this manner sets a terrible precedent for establishing future positions in the school district. Superintendent, they all may need support in the area of communications. It has been an unprecedented and challenging time for all school superintendents. However, this position should have been first discussed at the subcommittee level and then if approved, gone to the entire school committee for further discussion and an ultimate vote. I strongly feel that any position with benefits added to the school district should directly impact our students. On page 18 of our budget book, it states, "The budget must be informed by data-supported requests using multiple data points and process. Be informed by student focus and needs." On February 17, this was not done. After the meeting, I considered contacting the three building principals and asking them what position would they want for $50,000 that would directly impact their students. However, I did not do this because all three principals have attended some of our finance committee meetings. And as an individual member of the finance committee, it is not my role to go to them. This is not the procedure we follow. Just as adding and approving an administrative position without school committee analysis, study, and discussion is not the procedure we, as a school committee, should follow. I have been so concerned about having an administrative communication position that I looked at all school districts in Massachusetts with a school population between 1,100 and 1,700 on the Mass DOE Department of Education website. Our district has 1,218. There are 63 districts with a student population between 1,100 and 1,700. And yes, I counted that from Amesbury to Winthrop. Some of the websites may not be up to date. However, out of 63 districts that fit this student enrollment criteria, only six had a communication position designated. Two others had a communication plan, but not without an administrative position. So this now leads me to my motion under new business. I move that Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee form a communications subcommittee whose responsibility will be to look at and examine our district's entire communication and community engagement picture, both internally and externally. Then by mid-September of this year, make appropriate and pertinent recommendations to the school committee. I would suggest that this committee consist of two to three school committee members, the superintendent and director of IT, two to three school building principals, and two members of the Berkshire Hills Regional District staff, Tom Roy and Paul Caitlin. In forming such a subcommittee, we will get broader views and perspectives that will enable us to address the communication needs of our district.
Do I have a second? Now, if you ring a second, the motion fails. Anything else under new role business?
I will second that.
Okay, we do have a second. Is that Bonnie? Diane?
Diane.
Discussion?
This is Diane.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have, I have to agree with it. I had the same misgivings after the last meeting. And I think everything we do is always with students in mind. And if this is something that's with students in mind, then we need to look at this more carefully. We go through plenty of discussion about, about cutting positions every few years. Our teachers, other things. We go through a lot of discussion and thought-based process. And if this is truly needed, I think that we need to give it more thought. I would be much more comfortable with that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I speak more? Are you, okay. I feel that this is really, I looked at two school committee, two policies that both Winchita and Georgetown have. They have a communication plan and to be coordinated through the superintendent, school committee, and subcommittee called communications. Rich very cogently expressed why we needed this position. I really think we need to hear from more than one perspective. I know Peter's going to be giving us his perspective, but I really think we need to hear from the people who are on the receiving end of communication. And especially now that we're moving into an MSBA project, it is essential that we maybe study the way communications operate in this district. And I don't believe in my eight years, we've ever done that. Rich is correct. He has brought it up at meetings, but it's never been put down as a position. It's never put down as something that we should incorporate into the budget. And I really think that this is the time to do this. As Peter has said earlier, there are some things that are aligning here. This would go right along with what we're going to have to do as a school committee to sell this important project. Because we're going to be the people to do it. It's not going to be a paid consultant. It's going to be going to the forums in every town and standing there and arguing why we need a high school renovation project. It's going to be us. And I think we have to know what we're talking about. I have to, I would also think that we would want to be able to communicate that in every way possible. And it seems today that there are many, many external ways that we can communicate that as well as internally. If we don't look at it, if we don't view it in perspective and as a whole, we're losing what Rich has cogently said to us we need. So the fact that this subcommittee would be formed, it's going to be temporary. It would be ending in mid-September. It will give us a good groundwork and foundation to do what needs to be done in regards to both the work the district does and the project that is to come.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
I guess what stops us with the way and where we got in the last meeting? What stops us from going ahead and putting a committee together that you're talking about? Moving forward and not giving, I don't think anything that came out of the last meeting was a cart launch approval to approve whatever position and job description to be determined that Peter and or Rich or anyone else in this room dragged up. And so to me, I see it as the best of both worlds. We can continue and move forward and get different viewpoints, but march ahead and do that now. And it leaves more flexibility to hire sooner than next year when we'd have to wait. I mean, by doing what you're saying, it's putting a process in place, but then it's also delaying any action from happening.
Well, I think we have to, I think we have to look at what the process is. So let's just be clear. I did not hear Bill saying in his motion that we couldn't hire immediately. So.
It's an FY23 matter.
Yeah, I mean.
And in my view, this committee, or if we don't want a committee, you're right. We could do it among ourselves, but I think the more broad, you know, I don't like anything that's over 10 in a committee. Seven is the shaker side, I guess, is the golden number. But I think I'm right on that. Seven is the number. Okay. I think we need to hear from more people. Amherst Palms, right, it's an hour away. They have two positions. Guess they can afford, no, they have one position, Director of Communications. We could go there. You've done a lot of work. We've been emailing descriptions. Colhasset has two chief information officers. Somebody told me they can afford them. Georgetown has a plan. Mashkeys has an outreach coordinator. The Mashkeys site was really interesting because the superintendent, every Friday morning, does a superintendent's block using a camera in his office and comes in and says, "Good morning, district," and gives a complete thing. We could, for example, take the good news that we've heard tonight, yay, and put it on tomorrow. Peter could sit there and talk about it. Does it take much of a? Does it take much of a, I don't think so, the principals have it, they give it to Peter, Paul Caitlin could set it up, there is one way. So we could do it internally, but I just felt to get more interest and more people involved, it might be best for a subcommittee. But if a subcommittee is gonna kill us, then vote it down, but let's continue doing what you said, which is move the conversation forward.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? And just to be clear, Cory's correct, if this passes, it does not stop until I first hire a, in that position, that was not part of the motion. So, so roll call vote, Anne.
Can we have the motion again?
Yes.
I move that the Berkshire Hills Regional School District form a communications subcommittee whose responsibility will be to look at and examine our district's entire communication and community engagement picture, both internally and externally, and by mid-September of this year, make appropriate and pertinent recommendations to the school committee.
So I have a motion by Bill, a second by Diane, roll call vote, Anne.
Yes.
Jason?
No.
Sorry, Bonnie?
Yes.
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 Diane?
Yeah.
Cory?
Yes.
Rich? And I vote yes, so it passes by a eight to one. Okay, any other new or old business?
I make a motion that we appoint Jason St. Peter chairman of the communications.
Nice to know.
Thank you.
So if the public wants to comment, there's a raise hand bar in the bottom right of that toolbar, and then I'll recognize you.
Jason, Lisa, you've already spoken once, so take it very quick, please. Just unmute yourself and go ahead.
This is Jason Baumgart, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
So I live in Cheshire, my two boys go to Monument Mountain High School, you've already heard from my wife. Thanks for taking me. I'll just start with, doing these things is very uncomfortable for me, it really puts me out of my comfort zone. I give you guys credit for speaking at these things all the time, but I felt obligated to speak up again just because, you know, I were concerned for our kids. It's my understanding, it's my understanding that in order to play sports in the spring, that the kids still need to go through pool testing, and that's what I wanted to talk about.
Is that true?
So our boys have never really been into sports, and, you know, they really love ultimate frisbee. They've never had an opportunity to play on a team like that, and this spring, they're hoping to play. But as we know the rules, they have to submit to weekly pool testing in order to participate. This is still true, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I cannot understand how playing an outdoor sport like ultimate frisbee, where the kids run around on a big field outside, can introduce enough risk of exposure to justify this type of testing. There's no way that it does. Maybe when case counts were high and the sport was an indoor sport, it could be argued that a policy like this made sense, but now, outside, we're uncomfortable with the policy for many reasons. Many people are choosing to do the pool testing, that's clear, you mentioned the numbers, I think it was around 200. That's fine, that's their choice to have their kids do pool testing. As you know, most likely, all the swabs used in these test kits are sterilized with ethylene oxide, it says right on the label, it says EO. You can Google it, the fact checkers claim it's still safe, but it is a carcinogen, it's known to be a problem. In theory, there's not enough on the swabs to cause harm, but as a family that spends the money on organic foods, non-GMO foods, we take health seriously, we do things to be healthy. We don't wanna put those swabs into our kids' nose every single week when they're not sick, then there's no reason to do it, and we have to make a choice now. Tell our kids that they cannot go play frisbee because we're uncomfortable with somebody sticking a swab in their nose every week, or going against our comfort level and making them get tested every week. There's no reason this testing needs to be done for kids playing an outdoor sport. If you guys have data that says playing an outdoor sport raises your risk of catching COVID and transmitting it, please share that with me, but I can't imagine that you do. It doesn't make any sense that it would increase their risk. You guys are making this decision, and I'm probably out of time, sorry, you guys are making this decision, you're not doctors, you're making us make this decision to tell our kids if they can or can't play a sport because of our comfort level with their health. I would appreciate it if you guys would make pool testing optional for sports.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Anyone else? Seeing no other hands raised, but unanimous. There's one. Your name and address?
Good evening, my name is Lisa, I live in central Massachusetts.
No, it has to be, you have to be.
Excuse me?
Who's connected to the district, that is our rules. It has to be someone who has a connection to our district.
Motion adjourned.
Make your kids out of school, guys, these are too.
Okay, anyone else who's connected to the district? Seeing no one, I have a motion, and by unanimous consent, we will be adjourned, I don't need you.
Thank you very much.